Meeting to order with my gavel. And so I'd like to welcome everyone and I will start off with the reading of the electronic meeting script. Sounds like a church service, but no, okay, sorry. To conduct this meeting wholly electronically and to effectuate both the emergency procedures authorized by FOIA and the emergency ordinance. This library board of trustees needs to make certain findings and determinations for the record. First, because each member of this library board of trustees is participating in this meeting from a separate location. We must verify that a quorum of members is participating and that each member's voice is clear, audible, and then an appropriate volume for all the other members. Accordingly, I'm going to conduct a roll call and ask each library board member participating in this meeting to state your name and the location from which you are participating. I ask that each of you pay close attention to ensure that you can hear each of your colleagues. Following this roll call, we will vote to establish that every member can hear every other member. So I will start, friend Milhouser, Mason District from my home, and I will now go to Braddock District, Brian.
Brian Angler, Braddock District at my home in Burke, Virginia.
Okay, Providence, Miriam.
Hi, Miriam Smolin, Providence, from my home in Fairfax.
At large, Jane.
Jane Miscavige at my home in Vienna.
Suzanne Levy, Fairfax City.
Suzanne Levy at my home in Fairfax City.
Sue Jonathan Hampton, Drensville District.
My home in Great Falls.
Thank you. Sheila Janega, Hunter Mill District.
Sheila Janega, from my home in Reston, Virginia.
Keith Fox, Lee District.
Keith Fox from my childhood home in Boston, Mass.
Gary Russell, Mount Vernon District.
Gary Russell, Mount Vernon representative at home.
Priscilla Dando, Fairfax County Public Schools, and she said she might not be here, so I think she's not. Liz Walker, Sully District.
Liz Walker, attending the meeting from my home.
Thank you. Phil Rosenthal, Springfield District. He is not here. Okay, so that's everyone and we do have a quorum, even though two people are missing because according to the bylaws, a simple majority of the duly appointed members constitutes a quorum, so we do have that. So at this point, I will pass the virtual gavel to the vice chair so that I may be heard to make the requisite motion. So passing this to Jane. I move that each member's voice may be adequately heard by each other member of this library board of trustees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Suzanne?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any who cannot hear, say no.
Okay, second, having established that each member's voice may be heard by every other member, we must next establish the nature of the emergency that compels this, these emergency procedures. The fact that we are meeting electronically, what type of electronic communication is being used and how we have arranged for public access to this meeting. So therefore, I move that the state of emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic makes it unsafe for this board to physically assemble and unsafe for the public to physically attend any such meeting. And that as such, FOIA's usual procedures, which require the physical assembly of this board and the physical presence of the public cannot be implemented safely or practically. I further move that this board may conduct this meeting electronically through a dedicated Zoom meeting and that the public may access this meeting by the following link, https://zoom.us/j/84322560898 with a password of 974716. Okay.
Is there a second?
I have moved that, yeah, there you go.
They have been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Ryan, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Any opposed? Okay, pass.
Okay, great, it's passed. Finally, it is next required that all of the matters addressed on today's agenda must address the emergency itself, are necessary for continuity in Fairfax County government and/or are statutorily required or necessary to continue operations and the discharge of this board's lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. It is so moved.
Second.
Thanks Suzanne. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right.
Hey, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the public comment section of the meeting. The library board wishes to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on library-related issues. It is our policy to hear a maximum of five speakers at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers are limited to one public comment during a six-month period. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes for their comments. Thirty-second warning will be given before each speaker's time is up and the speaker will be expected to end promptly when time is called. Speakers are requested to pre-register with the library director. However, if there are available public comment slots open at the time of a board meeting, the remaining slots may be filled by individuals registering at the meeting. Board members will not question or respond to speakers and tonight there are no registered speakers. If anyone wishes to speak at a future meeting, please call the director's office at 703-324-8324. Okay, great. Now it's my pleasure to introduce Deborah Smith Cohen as tonight's speaker. You may recognize her from her monthly appearances at the board when she was a representative from FICPLE, which is the Fairfax County Public Library Employee Association, when she would make a presentation on library staff status, concerns, issues. You might also recognize her because she has worked with us for 13 years and in many branches, so she may has helped you in one of the branches. Before she came to us, she had worked in corporate libraries, government libraries, and association libraries. So she brought a wealth and a breadth and depth of experience that has greatly benefited Fairfax County Public Library. Tonight, as part of our ongoing introduction to the equity issues addressed in the county through the one Fairfax policy, Deborah will be introducing us to Safe Zone Training. The Fairfax County Court adapted and used this national and international program and its aspects of it to train county staff in the tools necessary to provide a welcoming environment and support for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals. Deborah, the virtual floor is yours. And you need to unmute.
You know, I host these things all the time and I get to say that to others most of the time.
Because I've been at meetings where the chair is very comfortable, you need to unmute yourself now, so it's like, okay, okay.
So I'm going to go back over here. Sorry about that. I had been previewing and I was not on the first slide, so I wanted to get back to the first slide before I started, okay.
Looks good.
This. So as Fran said, I'm Deb Smith Cohen. I'm the Assistant Branch Manager at Patrick Henry Library in Vienna. And my pronouns are she, her, and hers. I was asked to share with you our initiative and experience with getting Safe Zone Training for branch staff in February of 2020. Patrick Henry included in its Strategic Branch Goals Proposal a plan to host a community event during Pride Month in June 2020. The event would have included stories and family activities that affirm that people vary in lots of ways and that our differences, including around sexuality and gender, can be individual strengths that deserve respect and celebration. We planned to include an information table from Fairfax PFLAG, Parents and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, a local organization that supports members of the LGBTQ community. As we began to contact potential partners for the event, we were told that we should start with Safe Zone Training for staff. Events that are intended to welcome the LGBTQ community also need to feel comfortable for staff to be successful in meeting our goals. After reaching out to others in the county, we identified trainers from the Fairfax County Court who had provided training to the staff at John Marshall Library before their Pride Month event in June 2019, using materials from the Safe Zone Project. The Safe Zone Project is a website and organization that provides resources for training and enables companies, civics groups, and government agencies to commit to respectful LGBTQ interactions with knowledge and trust. It does not issue or audit any official designations. The Safe Space Training Organization is a similar organization and your agenda did mention Safe Space. They're very similar organizations, but the county court uses the Safe Zone Training tools, by the way. Part of this training involved learning the words that describe people, such as bisexual or transgender. Using language accurately and respectfully depends on understanding. Staff gain confidence when they have good tools for communicating effectively. Some of the terms that have been used in the past no longer reflect respectful understanding of these individuals or have changed in their meaning. Homosexual, for example, has become a less preferred dated word, while gay and lesbian have become more preferred. The word queer, once an epithet, has been embraced by some as an affirmation. The training included an exercise that illustrated issues faced by LGBTQ individuals that can increase risks to their health, employment, housing, peer and family relationships, interactions with police, and experience of violence. While sharing experiences, questions, and insights, it became clear that regardless of whether anyone attending the training identified as being part of the LGBTQ community, all of us had a family member, friend, neighbor, or acquaintance in that community. The training gave us greater understanding and insights, but we already had moved beyond seeing people with different sexual and gender expressions as strange or unknown. Finally, the training gave us tools to improve our interactions with people who may need us to confront our assumptions to meet their expectations for respect and genuine welcome. For example, many staff at Patrick Henry now wear buttons, when we were open to the public, that give their preferred pronouns. These pronouns may be the ones you would have assumed. However, by wearing our pronouns, we acknowledge the right of others to share their pronouns too. LGBTQ rights have been incorporated in national, state, county, and county legislative and policy protections. When staff have completed Safe Zones Training, they have the tools to deliver on the community's promise of safety and respect for patrons, colleagues, and volunteers. Staff already work to address expectations for welcome and recognition for other library users. We speak respectfully and use eye contact to confirm understanding when a user comes in with a family member to translate. We ask if assistance is needed directly without assuming disability. We collect materials reflecting various racial and cultural experiences and interests, providing mirrors and windows for all readers. We host book clubs that prioritize titles available to borrow, so no one has to pay to play to participate in a discussion. In many ways, this training is an extension of training we regularly use for other contexts. Sometimes a patron comes in and asks whether we have a current bestseller or a book on counting for their preschooler. But other times, their request involves more vulnerability and self-disclosure. Where are the books on grief? Do you have this book on diabetes? Do you have books on how to afford college? Can you suggest a book about a transgender experience? We want patrons to feel welcome and to receive effective and comfortable service, whether their interests seem benign to us or come with some anxiety. In other contexts, library staff have learned to use language in ways that acknowledge other types of diversity. For example, it can make sense to ask a child who has a problem, "Did you come here with an adult? Can you help me find that adult?" For children living with a grandparent or other guardian or who came with a nanny or au pair, it can be confusing or embarrassing to be asked, "Where is your mother or father?" A few words about identity. We all have multiple identities. Some are chosen, some are inherited, some may be visible, and some may not. In some places or contexts, our identity is important. In others, it's irrelevant or even private. Being seen and being safe in one's identities is a gift that libraries try to give to all. So what did we learn and what are the opportunities that came out of our training? Slow down assumptions. As in any situation that's susceptible to bias, attend to your blind spots. Be open to pronouns that are different from yours or from your expectations. Get over they verbs. Listen for curiosity and encourage it. Learning about sexuality and gender expressions is okay. Avoid unnecessary labels. Ma'am and sir are not the only ways to show respect. When you make a mistake, apologize, correct yourself, and move on, and don't repeat it. When someone needs help, respect whomever they trust to provide it. Finally, Pride Month 2021 is coming. We hope to be able to hold our community event then, if possible. Thank you for the chance to share what we learned and what we have to offer from the basis of this training. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. That was really interesting. I want more. I want more. Any questions from any trustees or comments? Yes, Liz?
Yeah, it's for Deb. How long was the training? How many hours was the training?
So I think we gave them about two hours of our three-hour meeting. It's longer than we often are able to give to training, but they said they really couldn't cut it shorter than that, and I think it was worth it.
And I'm sorry if I missed it. Who provided the training?
There were staff trainers from the Fairfax County Court system.
It sounded like it was very interesting training that people really got a lot out of, Deb. Has there been thought about offering this countywide to employees or to the public as part of our library?
Well, I can speak to the fact that the Assistant Branch Managers Group, which I participate in, had the training as well. And I know that there has been some interest in other branches, but I don't know beyond that whether there's other plans.
Okay.
Suzanne?
If it's often, I would be very interested in attending.
I'm curious, Deb, what are alternatives to ma'am and sir?
Oh, you just don't need to give gendered titles at all.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, there isn't a really clear one. I mean, so much of our language really is gendered.
Yeah.
Hadn't thought about that before. Thank you.
Yeah, Keith, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to share a personal story that's related to this. Thank you for that presentation, Deb. I was mentoring some foster children, a number of them, and was providing some financial literacy training. And the trainer kept saying, "Yeah, you just go to your mom and dad and you do this." So when you just now said, "Where's your mother and father?", that really hit home because the whole time I'm like, I can't sit still in my seat because I didn't mention to these trainers that they don't have parents, they're foster children, you know. So I mean, it's just, to your point of don't make assumptions, I really just wanted to share a personal story on that.
It's so easy to fall into those automatic traps, but trying to be attentive to that, I think is worth it.
Yeah. Jane?
I just wanted to thank you, Deb, and thank the staff who participated in the training. I like to think of our libraries and the people who work in them as being more safe adults, especially, you know, for young people. And kids in the LGBTQ community, sometimes they need all the safe adults they can get. And so the fact that our county library staff is getting educated so that they can be even more welcoming and build more trust with some of our patrons, I think is awesome. And I do have a question, which is, have you seen a difference yet? Have you, I mean, it's been such a weird year, but even among your colleagues, have you noticed any difference from the, after the training?
I think that, again, we have the training in February and the pandemic hit in March. But I think that part of the training was, you know, being sensitive, as you said, to the needs of our teen volunteers, which can vary in ways that we don't always anticipate, or other volunteers for that matter. I think that was one of the things that people felt they were going to be using most immediately. Beyond that, as I said, this isn't just about good service to the public, but it's also about our colleagues. So I think that that was a really valuable thing for us to do that affirmation for the sake of the colleagues we work with, who, some of whom are part of this community.
Thank you. Thanks for your time tonight, too. Sheila?
Yeah, I would like to thank Deb for this. This is, this type of training is so important in our society and I love the way you presented it tonight on another personal story. I have a dear friend who is now parenting a grandchild who has, you know, has come out and in order to give the grandmother support, to understand what's happening, you know, how this, how we have become more open in accepting of differences in our gender is so important just for everybody, you know, it's not just limited to a little teeny part of the population. So I got a lot out of this personally tonight and I've been paying attention to it from this personal point of view. So thank you very much and I'm happy to see this being done in our libraries because that's where we do encounter people's personal situations and knowing how to deal with them, I think is so very important and to be welcoming and helpful. So thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Um, I actually, just a question just came to mind. Does the training, it sounds like it's pretty comprehensive, does it include? You were saying that people share sometimes, like, you know, they're giving you like information about themselves, you know, diabetes, et cetera. Did it include issues, which concerns me so much with teens, is the connection with suicide? I'm very, it's something, it's like top of mind. And I wonder if it has any, if the training includes that, like especially with the namesafe space, saves zone, any kind of training to recognize when a child might be in distress or when a child might need more support or what to do in that. That always, as a teacher, always concerned me very much, just in the field of education, how we provide those supports when we're given that kind of training. So this training didn't attempt to provide that specifically, but it certainly acknowledged that there are much higher risks of suicide or self-harm in this community and that that's part of what we need to be aware of. I'm not aware of a specific training that we have just about suicide sensitivity in the county, but I may be wrong. Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to? I know it made me remember one of the young people who spoke at our September meeting about how much she appreciated one of the curated lists and also some of the displays, the rainbow reading, and then how it made her feel recognized and valued. And that was very moving to me because it wasn't something that I had thought about. I thought about it more, I guess, in an intellectual, societal way that, you know, we have these books and we want you to know about it, but that personal story. And that, I felt that with this training too, that it's a very, almost like feeling an understanding, relationship, all of that, which is really, really important. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Great, in our series, every month we've been having a different one and they're all really eye-opening in a different way. So thanks again.
I'm going to turn my camera off and let you continue. How's that?
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye. Before I go on, I want to see if Priscilla or Phil happened to pop in. I don't see them on the screen, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay, great. So the next thing on the agenda is the acceptance of the minute. So do we have a motion?
So move, I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Okay, do we have a second?
Okay.
And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. We will go on to the chair's report. So the first thing, I would like to remind everybody to complete your statement of economic interest and get that to Christine on or before February 1st, right? Christine, I mean, even if you get it on February 1st, it's, but doesn't it have to be into the clerk by the 3rd?
I don't want to put any of you in jail. I don't want to put any of you in jail, as Gary pointed out, that I'm nipping at your heels to keep you out of prison.
But that's a big fine. I mean, that's kind of scary when you read that fine. So I have to say, what I do is, what I have done is I filled it out and then I keep a copy of it. So then it's really easy to fill it out next year because it's always the same thing. Sheila, did you have a question or a comment?
I do. I received a paper copy in the mail with a self-addressed envelope, which I have returned. But the way the mail goes has been going, how do we know that it was received by, I can't remember the woman's name who is dealing with this.
I did the same thing and I got an email from that woman. I was looking for it here.
Teresa DeSantis.
Teresa DeSantis, yeah. It said, "Dehima Strangler, I received your form", and it took him like two days to get to her. I got it last Thursday. Now, I don't know, it surprised me that I got the response, but I did express to Christine earlier that I had mailed it and that I was worried about it arriving. So maybe you told her to respond to me. I don't know.
No, but I'm happy to check up on anybody.
Yeah, then maybe she'll just do that.
Did you check for me then, Christine, so I don't have to pester her, please?
Did you, have you mailed it?
Yes, oh yes, I know that. I have, I wrote down when I nailed it, so.
Sure, I'll be happy to check.
But it was, it's been nailed, not quite a whole week, but several days, yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you all for reminding me because I just opened the envelope. While you're all rushing around mailing.
You're a lawyer.
It's only the 13th. I mean, there's plenty of time.
There is plenty of time.
Miriam, it's going to be so awkward when I have to put you in jail.
When are they going electronic? Like, why are we still filling this out every year in paper? That's what I want to, not that you can answer that question.
I found the PDF online and that's how I'm going to submit it, Miriam, so I could probably share it with you.
Okay. I'm sure I can find it. Well, I shouldn't save it from last year and so, yeah, okay.
Didn't they email it to you?
Here it is. I dug it out of my piles.
Okay, you're good. Okay, I think Suzanne has a question.
I was just going to suggest when I mail mine in, I'm going to email Teresa DeSantis saying I put it in the mail today.
That's a good idea.
So she's got a record of it because I, I've been getting responses that Christmas cards I sent out on the 23rd are arriving this week.
Yeah.
And I had somebody tell me a bill was overdue and I mailed that on the 15th of December. I also sent a copy of one of those emails to Jerry Conley, just so.
I'm not going to make a joke about voting by mail. It would be a bad time to do that. But, but I'm planning, I'm meeting with Shelby about foundation stuff on January 26th and I'm bringing mine to the government center. That's what I like to do. Okay, so now anybody else, issues are, you're all set. Don't embarrass the rest of us by not getting it done. Okay. But right now, I would like to acknowledge library staff and the service that they have provided all during this pandemic. And now again, that we're going back under lockdown and express services. and the service that they have provided all during this pandemic. And now, again, that we're going back under lockdown and express services. I know it hasn't been easy. And, um, when I was reading the incident report, I just sort of highlighted some of the things that have happened and that like someone ripped down the COVID sign, they refused to leave when their time was up, and someone even stole the curbside service table from Richard Byrd. I mean, these are outrageous to read about. And the thing is with having worked on the front lines in libraries, I know that every day there are little things that happen during the day that don't make it into the incident report that make, um, you know, that are just like sort of chipping away at you when you're, um, public service. But nevertheless, um, I know then there are wonderful things that happen because I was remembering when I was a children's librarian, I remember one, a little third grader that we were talking about her favorite books. And then she looked at me and she had this look of awe on her face and she said, I bet you've read every book in the library, haven't you? And I said, well, yeah, sure. Of course I have. But the whole idea that that was her ideal of what a library and what working in a library must be the most wonderful thing. And so sometimes when, you know, when you get these nasty people, you have to go back and remember that more people are really great. But nevertheless, I just wanna ha, you know, trustees, a big thank you to staff, frontline and behind the scenes, because having to scramble to get things organized and ready and make the changes that were necessary, a lot of the stuff that doesn't get noticed when it goes well, but when it doesn't go well, there it is. Um, so anyway, just thank you to the staff. Okay. And now on to committee reports. So Suzie, uh, Suzanne, who's not really a committee, we'll have to get, to fix that. But Suzanne, any news from the foundation?
No.
Okay. Uh, finance committee, Miriam.
Uh, we did not have a meeting, so not for this meeting. We have no report.
Outreach, Brian.
Okay, uh, our next meeting is the 19th of February. It's a Friday at 2:00 PM and it's a Zoom meeting just like this, at which we'll cover, I'm sure, the next set of talking points. Uh, I just wanna remind you, you have the talking points that go through February. And what I wanted to ask, perhaps Christine is already going to say this in her uh, report, I don't know. But what I'm con- not concerned, but interested in learning is how did the food for fines go? And are there any issues with the RB overdrive shift? I haven't heard of any, except that the fines were a little bit low. And then for the other three points, the ebook of the month, the winter reading challenge, and one Fairfax Storytime, are they going on, on time, given the new status of library and, you know, uh, just how, is there anything to update on these so we can pass them? Uh, if you have that info when you give your report, I would be happy to hear it. Other than that, nothing more from outreach.
Okay, thank you. Um, policy, Sheila.
Okay, policy committee meeting, um, was on January the 12th. We just met and we reviewed policy W, which relates to library grounds and parking lot. Our next meeting will be January the 21st at 1:00 o'clock, and we will be reviewing the bylaws again at that meeting. And, uh, and you are, you are invited to attend. So, um, just go on the, I guess, on the, to get the link, you just go on, I guess, on, on the library board of trustees site on the homepage.
Okay, thank you. And what I found is easiest, if you wanna go right to the meetings and things, is to type in FCPL trustees. And then you immediately go to that page, which then has the links to our meetings, to every committee meeting, minutes from the past, the bylaws, policies, everything. And it's just a really fast way to get right to that screen, which is really good. And, and another reminder is that, um, uh, every trustee is invited to every committee meeting, as Sheila said. And, and also you are entitled to vote at every meeting, at any committee meeting that you attend. So it's not limited to the people who are the members of the committee, but to any trustee who attends. And the only reason I know these things is because we've been reviewing the bylaws. I know, that's not fun reading that we usually do, but it is full of information like that. So, okay. And now it is time for the director's report.
Thank you.
Christine.
Fran, I wanna thank you for acknowledging the staff because, um, one of the worst incident reports that I can remember in recent history happened today to, um, one of our branch managers. And, uh, a table was thrown at him because, uh, somebody was so angry about curbside services. And he was, he took the ta, I mean, he was hit by it. It wasn't thrown at him, it was thrown on him. And you, you know, people have really lost some perspective here and curb side is intended to keep everybody safe. And the fact that, um, it had the opposite effect in this, uh, instance is heartbreaking to me. And so you'll see that incident report next, next month. But it sure got our attention and we followed up ri- very quickly to make sure he's okay, but.
It's legal action planned?
The police have already been called. And the, um, branch manager who was hit with the table had the wherewithal to get the license plate. So hopefully, um, there will, he will be, the person will be held accountable.
Okay, good.
Christine, what was the issue around curbside service?
That, simply that we weren't open.
Closing.
He was angry that he couldn't come into the library. So, yeah.
Christine, will you be, um, alerting the trustee whose branch it is?
Sure.
Possibly.
Sure. Um, so Fran, I appreciate, and I know that the staff will appreciate, um, all of the good wishes that the trustees send. It is, I, I think my own opinion about this is that the library is kind of the last place where people can do what they wanna do. And to ha, to be the last place that gets taken away from them is kind of the last straw. And they just, it, it's a, it's a reaction that, um, is out of proportion for, um, the situation. And the thing about it is that all of our services are still available. We, we have a robust virtual online programming. Um, you can get access to everything in the collection through curbside by putting things on hold, just like you've always been able to do. So what they're losing is the ability to browse, which librarians love. We love the serendipity of being able to browse and stumbling, literally stumbling into a book you didn't know you needed right this second. And that is fabulous and we love that. But we are encouraging people to do that online at their kitchen table instead of in the building.
That's great. Well, I think also, I know, um, you know, when I, when I knew that it was, I had a, that it was coming on Monday and I knew I had a book on hold at George, so I went in on Saturday and and I realized that, you know, since we've been, when we were open, that I really, really enjoyed going to a different place. You know, okay, I have a two-story home, I can go upstairs, I can go downstairs, but to go to a different building, I mean, and it's crazy, but it was exciting. And I would teach staff people I know, I could talk to other people besides the, the husband and the cat. And, and just so, uh, I guess people who are less, uh, you know, have have other tensions, exactly what you're saying, that this is just that, that last thing. And the, and, and the thing is it's not gonna be over for a while. So people have gotta get a grip. I don't know.
Well, and the other thing that I kind of flip it around is people wouldn't get so upset if they didn't care so much. So some of these people are our best, most staunch supporters. But they really still need to hold their tempers because we can't have people screaming at our staff. So, and, and the statement that we've been given is that we know that, um, library services are critical to the community and that we didn't make this decision lightly. It's based on rising positivity rates and case counts in the Fairfax Health District. We, like I said, have robust virtual programming and the physical collections all still available to people. It's just an extra step of, you know, calling and having it brought out to you. So, um, that's our, that's the big thing. Sheila, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I had, um, an experience today. I wouldn't bring it up except for what you've just said. I, I was at a, a branch today. I had a meeting inside, so I was standing outside waiting to be let in. And there were a lot of people at curbside and I, I was shocked at the nasty grumbling that was going on. And when I was inside the branch, our staff was in there working their tails off. They were running around, they were answering phones. I mean, they were, they were busier than when we have a branch full of people. And, um, I was kind of disillusioned by, I felt, I, I didn't feel good about the, the, the grumbling. And I think I probably got some dirty looks when I was let in and I hadn't even made a phone call to get in. And so, um, I don't know what we do about that, but people are losing their grip and these were just nice, nice women. They didn't, you know, you would bump into in the grocery store, they didn't look especially angry or, but they were, you know, grumbling and making terrible remarks. And, um, I was really, I didn't know what, I didn't know what to say. So I said nothing. I just, you know, ignored them. So.
And Suzanne, I think. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Suzanne, I think you wanted to say something.
Um, I, I noticed I dropped a, a book off at Fairfax on Monday. And I think it might be helpful if there were some signs at the entrance to the parking garage, letting people know that we were no longer open to the public. I don't remember if there were some there.
I can't imagine that the staff didn't put them up there because they know that facility inside and out. So I think they would put the signs. We have, signs are available for every access.
Well, I think it would be helpful because if you, you know, if you drive in and go up the ramp to the top where you get to the pickup place and then you find out you can't go in, it might assuage some of the, um, annoyance if, if it was more visible. And my other thing I was gonna mention, noticing that school teachers are gonna be given the vaccine, has there been any discussion of frontline county workers being higher on the list, like our library, our branch staff?
There's a ton of discussion about that and it change, it seems to change hour by hour. There are criteria that are determined by the state and they are interpreted by the health department and we are going by what they say. So it's not something that I, that, that the agency directors have any influence over. But, you know, they are criteria that are, that are determined by the state.
You know, I just, I would feel guilty getting mine if frontline workers haven't had theirs yet. And my husband told me this afternoon, the CDC is changing the guidelines to age 65 from age 75 as of like today or something. So it seems to be in flux, but I, I don't know if we as a board could, could advocate or if it's not worth it.
I, that is not where I would put my energy. I think that, that is being done at such a high level and I think we would become a nuisance.
Well, let's staff know we're concerned for.
Absolutely. Let me, let me just say that every director is advocating for their staff.
Good.
So. So Jetha, did you have your hand up?
Um, I wanted to just, um, when you're saying this and Sheila says the same kind of grumbling going on and in light of what happened on the 5th, um, so locally and in light of what's supposed to be planned for the 17th, I just wanna ask whether there have been any, I mean, precautions taken, uh, into consideration. On 17th is a Sunday, so thankfully it's a Sunday, so we wouldn't be, you know, having much, you know, we wouldn't have that traffic there or people manning it. But, um, I myself am very concerned, just me, myself, my family. I don't want anybody to leave the house, um, or just even to go, I would just, I am feeling, planning on doing that for around that time. And I'm hearing that somebody actually threw a table at a lib- librarian is is just a height. That's insane. That's completely terrifying behavior. So yeah, people are ramping up. They get there, they don't, they don't know that it's closed, it's closed, it's one more thing. But also people are really off the chain behaving like that and seeing that just, you know, un, accepted and it's, the behavior is okay, there are no sanctions, it's complete lawlessness. You know, those people who are in the front line like that between their public and their service. I, I, I'm sure you're talking about it, but.
Are you talking about the inauguration itself?
Just the inaugu, the 17th of January, there's something that's supposed to be planned. That's all over the internet that there, something planned. The inauguration, there's something that's supposed to be happening. So in these next few days, what I'm saying is, you just said you saw the most, the most, the highest risk thing that you've seen happen in one of these incidents, incident reports today. It's already crazy what happened last month that's in the report. Today it ramped up. Sheila goes in, she sees people that are already grumbling. Um, we're, you know, these are people who are not, are not allowed to stay home, you know. Sheila goes in and they're, they're busy, they're bustling, they're doing all this stuff. These are crazy days and I just want to just make sure that I'm, I mean, I can't imagine you're not, you guys are on top of everything, but that concern, that specific concern as to these moments and the danger to all of us, especially in the DC area, in these moments when you're dealing with the public in a public service situation, when the public is not happy, when much of the public is not happy.
Well, thank you for, thank you for pointing that out. Um, libraries have not been open on Sundays since the pandemic started. So that's great for the 17th. And then we are, all county facilities are closed for the inauguration. So that'll help us out in that regard too. But I do hear what you're saying about just the general, um, anger, you know, and, and, and we're the person that somebody takes it out on. So thank you for being aware of that.
Post inauguration as well. And I just wanna make sure that we, we need to empower you to take measures that you don't nor- normally have the, you know, the latitude to take, please let us know. Um, because these are just very dangerous days. And when you're public facing in a service industry, especially, not industry, in a service provision like the library,
Yeah.
could be even higher on people's like annoyance and that threw a table at a librarian. I, I can't even imagine. So, you know.
Well, thank you. I didn't mean to bring us down to like a just depressing part because, and the rest of my report is much more uplifting. Um, Brian, to your points, um, food for fines was successful. It wasn't as high, our numbers weren't as high, I don't think. I, I don't know that I've gotten the full numbers yet. But I don't expect them to be as high as last year. Um, there are a lot of reasons for that. Including the fact that there was a lot of the time, uh, that we weren't charging fines this year. So, um, so, and we knew that. And we structured food for fines to be more about help your neighbors instead of reducing your fines. And we had a great feel-good story. Talk about the antithesis of what we were just talking about. A family from the Centerville, uh, family delivered to the Centerville, um, library, I think 50 pallets of food. It was a huge amount. I may be mistaken about that, but it was a huge amount of food because that's what they chose to do with their family for, um, the holidays. So, um, I, I feel like I need to balance the negative that I was just talking about and give, give due time to the positives. There are an awful lot of fabulous people out there. And we're happy to be partnering with them. Um, I don't think that any of the other talking points have been impacted by the decision to go back to curbside. Um, I'll take a closer look at that to make sure. But certainly nothing that we've thought of in the last couple of days. But thank you for, for bringing that up. Um, so I'm, it's my pleasure to talk about the short story dispenser. Um, both of the, both of the items that I was slated to talk to you about tonight are, um, we only were able to do because of incredibly generous donations from the George Mason friends. And so I wanna just give that huge shout out from the very beginning. The short story dispenser, uh, dispenses eco-friendly paper and generates one, three and five minute stories. And it's currently at the Thomas Jefferson Branch, but it can travel to other branches. And there's an online portal where people can get their short stories. And we can tailor the collections to themes like, um, African-American authors for Black History Month, Juneteenth. We can do kids stories, stories for the summer reading program and Read Across America Day. We can do young adult stories for Teen Tober and poetry for National Poetry Month. And the Thomas Jefferson Branch plans to host short story contests for kids, teens, English language learners, um, where the winners will see their stories in print through the machine and then online in the portal. And I just asked Laurel Takama, the, um, branch manager at TJ to describe what she had seen the first couple of days that the short story dispenser was available. And she said there was a little boy lying on his stomach next to the machine, um, reading everything that came out of it. And they heard a lot of, wow, that's so cool. So even though we have volumes and volumes and volumes of books in the library, it's the, the, you know, tiny little receipt printer thing that really caught the kids' eyes. So, um, this is, that's a super fun one.
Question, Fran? Is this new? Cause I don't remember this from prior years, but.
Oh, no, it's new.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's a, they bought the dispenser for us and we just got it about four, three months ago, four months ago.
And the dispenser is, is from what? From where? Is that a, like, who came up with the whole dispenser thing?
That's a great question. And I don't know. That's a great question and I don't know the answer to that. Yeah.
It's such a clever idea, you know?
I think they've had them in like metro stations so that if you don't have something to read when you're on the metro, you can get a short story.
I've never seen that. That's clever too.
Yeah. So not in the DC area, but in other, other transportation systems. So it's not new, but it's, we're, we're kind of, I guess maybe the library aspect of it is new, at least new to us.
That's wonderful. That's a wonderful idea. It's fun.
And then the little free pantry is another thing that the George Mason friends purchased. The George Mason staff wanted to help the Anandale community, which has a high rate of food insecurity. And they settled on a little free pantry, which is modeled on the idea of the little free libraries where people take a book and leave a book or just leave books when they're done with them. And so the pantry was ordered from Etsy, from a carpenter in Ukraine. The friends hired a contractor to install it and it was ready to go just before Thanksgiving. And since then, it has been well-stocked by the community. It's located in an area near the front door, but kind of past the front door so that allows people some privacy when they're either leaving or taking donations. And the sign in there says, take what you need, leave what you can. We welcome new and unopened, unexpired, non-perishable foods. Please no glass jars. New and unopened toiletries, shampoo, soap, dental care, menstrual care, new and unopened school supplies. And we haven't gotten a lot of feedback from visitors yet, but other county employees who happened to be there have said it's been super busy. Like, wow, what's this thing over here? It's been busy the whole time I've been here. So, but it's in a place that the staff can't really see it. So they don't have as much anecdotal evidence about that as the short story dispenser. But it has been very, very popular and News of the Pantry got really great response on Instagram last month. So those are two kind of happy stories about just weird technology that we're using, or not even technology that we're using to help the community.
I have a question if I can. Is that a pantry in a place that can be reached now that the library building is closed or can it be moved? Okay.
It's outside. It's actually outside.
Okay, I thought it was in there.
No, no, it's outside and that was intentional to offer the privacy.
Yeah.
Yeah. So those are kind of fun things. And then the last update I have for you is that Doug Miller updated the opportunity maps. And forgive me, he updated them a couple of days ago, but this week has been so wackadoodle crazy with the, going back to curbside that I neglected to send them out to you, but I will send them out tomorrow. But they, they do exactly what Liz, you asked with giving a few more indicators of where you are in the county so that you can figure out where the opportunity neighborhoods are. So I will send them out shortly. And that's my report. Any questions?
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Okay. Thank you very much. Now it's time for the roundtable. So I guess I'll just go around the screen, which is probably going to be weird. But immediately to my right is Jane. So I'm going to start with Jane.
I'd like to thank Margaret and all of the staff. My thank you extends to all of the staff for their ongoing good nature and patience, especially with people like me who have email and technology issues at all times. So Margaret set aside time to help me figure out my email and it was really kind of her to sit down with me. So she's a rock star.
She is. Suzanne, leaving. Unmute yourself.
I did, sorry. Nothing new and exciting that I can think of. Just Happy New Year, everyone. And I look forward to the day we can all meet in person again.
Me too. Gary, how about you?
I just want to join in on the thank yous. First, I want to thank Deb, not just for her presentation, but for her longtime efforts at Welfare, Enrichment and Staff. And then secondly, Fran, I'm glad that you thanked staff. I probably have more library staff in my district than any of you. And I like to put a little thank you in the, in the foundation gala each year to thank the staff and the friends. I didn't have that opportunity this year. So maybe they'll hear about it here tonight. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Gary. Keith.
Sorry about that. I also wanted to thank Margaret for saving me on the email. I'm glad I was the only one. I wanted to thank Deb for that presentation. It's, it's, it's always good to be aware about some of these issues that we have. And also wanted to thank Christine for introducing two new things that the library does that I wasn't aware of. I have a growing list right now and I want to write an article by 10 favorite things the library does that you don't know.
Great idea.
Getting excited about it. So.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you. Sheila.
All right. Well, I'm going to get on the bandwagon for the thank yous, starting with Margaret, who also rescued me. And she's just fantastic. And I wish I could say it's the first time she's done it, but she has. I, I thank Deb for her presentation tonight. She gave me much more information and I'm glad that she's continuing to work so hard with the, with her, her Patrick Henry staff. A big thank you to the staff who are working in the branches. I mean, they're changing from curbside to letting people in to curbside again. And, and I think this is just a, I think rising to the occasion. I just hats off to them. And I want to thank Christine for jumping in and taking over for Jessica. I think that's a, you've been, you've been great in, at a very hard time with lots of ups and downs and changes. So, and just every, thank you for the whole board for being so, so with us. So that's, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Brian?
I have nothing specific from Braddock District. I joined with all the thank yous and I appreciate it. And I do have my email working, so I'm happy for that.
Sujatha?
I haven't even had the great opportunity of having my email set up, but it is on Friday because I had no wifi. The wifi went out of my house for several days. We had to have it totally repaired and all of that. And I missed this entirely. So Friday, Margaret is, is meeting me and helping me set up my email, which is amazing. And of course I echo everyone's thanks to Deb. I am so, I mean, it's really great to just be persistently, persistently pursuing a goal of educating as many people as you can and doing as much as you can and chipping away at bias and over the, over the, over the long haul. And that's, you know, really strong work. So thank you. It's hard work. I appreciate it. And Christine, of course, thank you so much for such a great presentation. I mean, tiny story printing machine. It's amazing. That's amazing. Yeah. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. And Liz, how about you?
Well, my story's a little bit unique. I want to thank Fran for calling me yesterday. I mean, about the emails, I've been checking my emails and I saw that I didn't have anything since the end of the year. And I thought, oh, I've never had a cycle in January. Maybe we start out really quiet. So I will have the pleasure of meeting with Margaret one more time on Friday as well. So I'm not, my emails are not up and running. It probably will be after Friday, but I was shocked when Fran called me. Thank you, Fran. I don't really have anything else to say, but I, I can't, I really wish that we were in person. Like, you know, when you, when you were talking, Christine, about the dispenser, like Miriam, I'm going, what does this dispenser look like? And what is this dispenser? So maybe one of these days when we get back in, we start meeting at the libraries again, we can see some of these wonderful things and take it back to our libraries and maybe our friends groups and stuff like that. But right now I've got like a little film in front of everything that's being presented because I'm a visual person and I'm not getting the sense of it. But it is exciting stuff and it's just remarkable that how we are keeping the library going and providing services. And I did read over that report about activity or incidences at the libraries. And I think, I can't remember, it might've been Phil, it might've been Gary. I know it was another gentleman. It could have been Brian. But a while ago I said, you know, could we possibly be a little bit more fluid on the 30 minutes that we had on the computers? Because I'm the kind of person that just gets warmed up in 30 minutes, that kind of a thing. And I saw that there were incidences of based on time on the computer. So I do think that, I think it was Sujatha this evening who brought up about the bigger environment that we're all operating in. And I think people are getting frazzled and little things will tick us off. And I'm, I find it myself. I find it that, you know, I'm dealing with the same insurance companies over and over again and waiting hours on the phone and getting, you know, getting clicked off and things where I'm getting agitated. And when I get the next person, they're getting an angry person. So I think it's good for all of us to remember our own behaviors and love the Deb Smith Cohen comments because I have a tendency to say, you know, parent rather than an adult. I mean, I, I've got that registered now in my brain. So it's a constant learning and, and being a part of this group really helps refresh myself as well. Also, thank you all for that.
Thank you, Liz. And Miriam. Miriam.
So I won't, I won't repeat all of those thank yous, but I will tell you that it still constantly amazes me how many, like really in between meetings, I'd have to say three or four people a month, I'll have conversation with them. They'll say, do you know that the library has this wonderful electronic store? Did you know that you can download books like that? Oh my God. How do these people still not know that? But it's nice to know people in our community are still discovering it and appreciating it. So thank your collections department. They are always so happy when they finally, you know, download a book.
That's right. That reminds me, so that Brian's question about the ebook switch over, that, everything went well with that, yeah?
Yeah, we didn't get very much feedback at all about it. So I think it, and it's a two-phase thing. So it was just the first phase. The second phase with the magazines is coming up and that'll be a little bit bigger, I think.
Okay.
Wait, because I, I use it for the magazines. And every time I go in there, I think, uh-oh, are they changing yet?
Oh, I've been afraid to go. Well, yeah, because I was like, did it change or not? Anyway, so I'll wait. I'll just wait. Okay. Well, I think that's about it. And I guess there's nothing else on the agenda except for a motion to adjourn. Suzanne, in her, but muted, but still. I could read her lips and.
Oh, moved.
Okay. Now do we have a second?
Second.
Jane, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned and we'll see you next week and.
Next month. Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Lovely to see you.
Bye-bye. Thank you. Night.